Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, compliance with NJSA ten colon four, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Herman. Mr. Canderozi. Mr. Wall. Mr. Fleming. Mr. Marzo. Here, Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak. Thank you.
Thank you. Executive session, counselor.
Mr. Chairman, there's no executive session, but I would with the your chair and the board's pro request like to address the board separately after the meeting, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, a payment of voucher reporting secretary for this evening, November twenty first, twenty twenty two. All favor. Thank you. Pass this in there. As far as meeting minutes ago, are you okay with doing these three? Do you have any objection?
I have no objection.
Okay, sure. Can I do them together?
I don't know who's been here, so I don't.
Okay, we're gonna have to do them separately. Okay, um, may I have a motion for approval of minutes from the August fifteenth, twenty twenty two regular meeting? Yes. I don't know.
I don't have the eligibility list.
You think you were not. Okay. So I think we still have enough. If you don't vote on this, I think that's the same way to go. So, um. Again, I need a motion for August fifteenth for your. May I have a roll call?
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Riker. Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Wall. Mr. Fleming. Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes. Okay, then we have, um. Approval of minutes from September nineteenth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting. Does anyone feel they were not here today? No? May I have a motion, please?
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming. Mr. Marzo. Yes. Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes, thank you. And lastly, um, approval of minutes from October third, twenty twenty two, regular meeting also. Motion. Second. Roll call.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming. Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes, thank you. Engineering and planning matters, gentlemen, you have anything for this evening? Thank you. Uh, resolutions, we have a couple of resolutions, I'll turn it over to, uh. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there are two resolutions for this evening. Resolution twenty twenty four is a resolution granting preliminary and final major site plan approval with. Barren's relief for a two-story office building, um, in the HC zone.
That is, um.
R, I'm sorry, R and K Jordan Mill, the LLC.
Thank you. Everybody okay with, um, with that resolution?
I'm sorry, I should, and just to make it easier, those eligible to vote are Dr. Campbell, Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Herring and Mr. Hudak.
I'm sorry, just to confirm, this is for RJK.
Our R and K Jordan Realty.
Okay, because I have Campbell, Riker, Bernstein, Riccardi.
Yeah, but Riker's not here, Riccardi's not here, and Wall's not here. So you can't call on some who's not here. They won't vote.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, and I get a roll call.
Uh, Dr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Yes. Thank you. And you have one more.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, resolution twenty twenty two, twenty five. Um, that's amended administrative approval after second courtesy review, that's for the changes to the Ocean County vote. Votech Building out on, um, uh, five seventy one. Those eligible to vote are Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Herman. Uh, Mr. Fleming, Ms. DeMarzo, Mr. Herring, and yourself, Mr. Hudak.
Thank you. Anyone care to make a motion? Second. And roll call.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Herman. Mr. Fleming. Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Herring. And Mr. Hudak.
Yes, thank you. Uh, changes to the agenda, we have a few for this evening, the, um. First one, and, um, some of you in the audience may be here for these, so, uh, please take note. Um, we have a, um, withdrawal of application block two, two, zero, zero, nine, lots two. A to Z site contractors. So they have asked us to withdraw their, um. Application. So that's getting crossed off, uh, this evening's schedule. Next, um, we have a request to carry the application for block three, nine, oh, two, lots fifty eight. And fifty eight point oh, one through fifty eight point oh, four, and that is Bellevue Estates. Is there anyone here representing that?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, that's actually scheduled for December the twelfth, so we'll have to continue to announce that. Um, but they had asked that the matter be carried into, excuse me, into January.
Um, well, we can't do that, because we don't have a schedule for January yet.
So, so what you would do, Mr. Chairman, is you would probably carry it to the January reorg meeting just to further announce the date.
Okay. And that meet, the date of that meeting is?
Good. January seven. January ninth.
Okay, um, I guess, do I need a motion and all that again? No?
No.
All right, then we also have a request to carry application for block twenty five, oh, one, lot three, three forty, West Commodore LLC.
Salvatore Alferi on behalf of the applicant, yes, we had requested that we carry this, we're still working on some tweaks to the plan. Um, if you carry it to the reorg meeting, by then we'll know what the resubmission would be, and then we could pick a date from there.
Okay.
And of course, the board has granted an extension of time which act.
Carried it is to one, nine, twenty three.
Without the need for further notice. Thank you.
Okay, so let me, uh, just cross things out. So I guess, uh, the audience members are here for another application that's still on the, um. Docket. Which carry? Okay. Um, okay, without further ado, um, then our first, um. Application is block one, nine, five, oh, one, lots twenty nine, point oh, five, Eric Jackson.
Now, that was a request to carry.
I apologize, I was out of the office, I did not see that, I, I apologize.
Okay. So we have block four, oh, one, lot nine, right?
What are we, where are we carrying that one to?
That one too.
One, nine.
Where we carrying it to?
We're gonna carry it also to the January ninth meeting. Not, he's about to, yeah, we're all, that one's also being carried, also, it's gonna end up being assured, we were concerned how long the night would.
Exactly, so we had all these applications and. Okay, so. The four, oh, one, you said is being carried, lot four, oh, one, not.
No, 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 number three.
Number three, the one you were about to call.
Okay. Back, let's go, this is being carried.
Uh, you want me to announce?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, members of the public. The application for block nineteen, five, oh, one, lot twenty nine, point oh, five, Eric Jackson, forty six LLC, that matter is also being carried to the January nine. Two thousand twenty three meeting without requirement of further notice, the purpose of that. Uh, matter being carried, however, is for future scheduling purposes, as my understanding is that there will be no applications heard at that reorganization meeting.
Okay, and we go to block four, one, lot nine, Frankville Road.
Good evening. Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this application relates to a, uh, March, uh, two thousand and twenty two, um, approval. For approximately six hundred eighty thousand square foot development involving, um, warehouse and office. Um, there was an issue that arose, um, when the board was, um, during the preliminary approval about an access easement along the solidly, I'll call it the solidly, solidly property line. Um, the applicant, um, the board, I think, initially thought that everything was worked out, um, with this, um, adjoining property on the easement, turns out that it wasn't. The applicant has, um, made some revisions to the plan to accommodate the, um, the adjacent property of the easement. Um, as well as we have the fire people on board a bit, from an engineering perspective, I have no problem with the amendment that the gap is discussed, the changes that are.
Thank you. Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our office has a report dated October seventh, two thousand twenty two. From a planning perspective, the property's still in the same zone, so it's still a permitted use. Um, from a traffic perspective, um. They are accommodating the adjacent property owners' concerns with a revised circulation plan, which we have some comments on. And I believe the applicant is prepared to testify as to the reasons for the amendments to the circulation plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, this is the board Salvatore Alferi on behalf of the applicant, as your board professional summarized. We were here, I think, in the spring, and we received final approval from this board. But, um, the resolution was never adopted, because after that approval was granted, um, Mr. Bavino stepped up and advised us, and then the board that. He had concerns in that he had, his, his company has a thirty-foot-wide exclusive access easement to the rear property. And, uh, we did not accommodate for that on our plan. So since that time, we've negotiated with Mr. Bavino and his, he's not here yet, but his attorney and engineer, and we have a joint traffic engineer. They're all present, uh, we've come up with this plan so that we can share. Access if and when that back piece is ever developed. Uh, for the purpose of tonight, we're seeking simply to have our final approval. Uh, approved again as amended, and we'll summarize in a moment, um. What the changes are so that we can accommodate, uh, the, the rear property. As a reminder, this approval, when granted, required that we realign the road, because it comes in at an angle when it intersects. We have been before Ocean County and Graham will discuss that, um, in a minute. And we have a contract to acquire land so that we can make a perpendicular, um, connection of when the roads improvements are done, which was a condition of the preliminary approval. Um, Graham McFarland is, um, our expert, we're gonna ask that he be sworn in, he hasn't testified on this application previously, Ian.
Did you?
Oh, he did too, okay, well, do it again.
Well, since this is a separate application to some extent, as it's amended final, it's easier to start, thank you, Mr. Graham, uh, Mr. McFarland for, Mr. Graham. Mrs. McFarland for raising your right hand, so may swear or affirm the testimony information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, uh, for the record, Graham McFarland, professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, uh, currently, uh, licensed in the state, state of New Jersey, testified before this board on many, many occasions.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, as described by your professionals and as indicated by Mr. Alfieri, you can see, uh, exhibit A one on the, uh, on the screen. A one shows the site, uh, block four, block four, oh, one. Um, lot nine with the frontage on right, on right to Bow Road and on Collendorfsky Road. Uh, the board recalls this application was approved a, a, a few months back, and as Mr. Alfieri indicated, there was a, um, an easement. From our property, which is lot nine, to one of the adjoining properties, lot three, in a, which is in the rear, which sits behind, uh, behind lot nine. Um, lot three is, is a landlocked parcel, does not have any direct street, street frontage or street access. So our property contained an easement for the benefit of, of lot three. Uh, when, when the site plan was designed, uh, that was not accommodated for in the, in the original design, it was uncovered. It was uncovered, um, a little bit later, so again, lot, lot three is, is back here, the subject lot is, is outlined in, uh, outlined in yellow. Anthony, if you can go to, uh, A two for me. A two, you can see, this is the, uh, this is the, the site plan that was, um, originally approved by the board. You can see the access road was here, just came, uh, along the east side of the property to serve the buildings. And then, you know, loop back, looped back out to, uh, to right to Bow Road. Uh, you can see the four buildings that are proposed, it did not propose for any, any direct access to, Sal, watch out. Any direct, direct access to, again, to lot three, which again, sits, sits back in that portion. Uh, so then we came up with a revised plan, and Anthony, go to A three for me real quick. So this is the, uh, the amended plan that we prepared, and we outlined in red just to make it a little bit easier, easier to see. So what we have proposed now is to provide a driveway from Collendorfsky Road all the way along the, the perimeter of the site. To adjoin, um, to adjoin lot three. Uh, at, at such a time when lot three site plan is designed, uh, it would be served by that, by that access driveway. Uh, the board, of course, would have the opportunity to review the application for that, for that lot three. And if, based upon the intensity, the design of that application, if that necessitated anything different at this particular inter- intersection. The board would have the opportunity to address it at that time. Right now, we don't know what's gonna be proposed, or what could be possibly be proposed on lot three. So, you know, we're not gonna, you know, we didn't want to guess at what this intersection could ultimately, ultimately need. Based upon their specific needs, you know, that may need to be, uh, may need to be wider, uh, something along, along those lines, but. Our proposal would be that that would be, uh, conditioned in a resolution clearly, clearly stated. That the board would certainly have an opportunity to review actually both of the street intersection designs when contemplating a development for, uh. For, for that, for that sub, subject lot. Uh, Anthony, just go to A four for me real quick.
Mr. McFarland, I apologize, and I'll apologize twice, because I've been the stickler on this a little bit. So if you look at A three. And head towards lot three, see that red line that you drew? And there's that, I can't read it on this plan, I apologize, but part of that access still goes through. I guess the connection, that, that's. I guess the connection, that, that's, that's the piece that needs to be explained.
That's temporary. I think we're asking, right?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what you were asking, Sean.
Are you talking about this, the, the building that's on the bottom right?
Yes.
And the driveway?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, we'll get to that now.
Uh, yeah, Anthony, go back to, back to A three for me. And then if you can zoom, if you can zoom in on, on the, what the building that's on the bottom right portion. Perfect. So what's proposed with the original plan is an emergency access, uh, drive that would, that would connect the parking area, two of these parking areas um, that serve building number, or the building's not, not identified, but it serves a building which is in, in the eastern corner of the property. When the access drive is built, there would be full access, you know, to that building for emergency purposes, either by the new access drive or by one of the two, one of the two driveways. So before, so before this driveway was built, there would be a, you know, let's call it a temporary, uh, connection between uh, those two driveway, just so that there's full access around, around that particular building.
And we, because we had to design this to operate independently because we don't know when, if ever, that back piece is going to be developed. So we, um, when we go back to four, you'll see what we're going to, Graham will describe what we're going to install as part of the development of our site. And then if the rear is ever developed, what they're going to develop to connect.
All right. So Anthony, if you can go to A four again for me, please.
I guess while, while you're getting to there, my, my point, if, if from an engineering perspective, it's fine. And if it, if from the affected property owners, it's fine. I don't want to get in the way of it unless the board certainly has any questions. We just have to figure out a way how to articulate the timing and the rights.
Yeah, and we've, I've prepared actually a, um, a reciprocal easement agreement that we have been circulating between sides. And once we finalize it, we'll send it to this board and you'll have final say on that.
And I would presume fire also, just to make sure if it's an emergency access.
That's fine. That's fine. It will ultimately be recorded, uh, for this property and it will, it will vacate the existing thirty-foot easement, replace it with this new easement.
Understood.
So next, next we have exhibit A four. Uh, A four is an exhibit that shows uh, which entity would be responsible for which portion of the, of the driveway to be constructed. Uh, frankly, as I look at here on the screen, the color choice is not great, but you can see on your, on your handout a little more clearly that what we show in green, uh, up in the front here, uh, that would be required as part of this application. So part of the development of, of, uh, block four oh one lot nine would be, would be the green part up and up in the front that would provide for full access to, to the project. Uh, the second part is the yellow part, which would be the extension of that access drive to service lot three. So the agreement between the property owners is that the owner of lot nine would construct the improvements that serve, uh, serve this site plan that the board's considering. The owner of lot three would be required to construct the extension from, uh, from its terminus, you know, about at, at the end of the first building here, back to service lot three. So that would be a private agreement between the, uh, between the two owners, but should also certainly be spelled out in the, in the resolution. Uh, Mr. Peters issued, issued a review letter with, um, a couple of comments. Uh, one comment he, um, he asked about was, uh, the need for a, a need for a buffer. And he's correct that the ordinance does require a ten-foot buffer uh, along the, uh, along the proper line, ten-foot buffer between the property line and the curb. And the plan does provide for that ten-foot buffer. Uh, what we submitted in support of this application tonight was just a one-sheet site plan. Uh, of course, we'll have to prepare the grading plan, uh, lighting plan, uh, landscaping plan as part of resolution compliance to get, to get all the loose ends buttoned up. And the necessary landscaping would be shown at that time. So we would agree to provide the buffering in accordance with ordinance requirements. That's all I have for right now.
Um, we have, that's really all we have. We could, we'll address their comments when, 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 if and when they're ready, your professionals. John Ray is here. If you want to hear traffic testimony, but the site design, other than this, the driveway says we described, uh, the traffic hasn't changed, but he's here if you have questions, but also obviously the representatives of the rear property owner are here as well.
And, and I, I lied. I'm going to add something else. Um, just to, uh, briefly discuss the uh, headway which we've made with the county regarding the intersection of right to Bo Road and Commodore. Uh, we have had several meetings with the county and have submitted, uh, design plans to the county for that intersection, uh, for that intersection improvement. So we've made significant, uh, significant progress on that. Our client has also been negotiating with the owner of that corner lot to, to acquire the necessary land. Uh, and I know that there's, there's been progress on that. So, um, that is all in progress and, and proceeding fairly well. This building or the building at the bottom? Okay, this guy here? That building from the property line to the, to the, well, there, that's not a, uh, that's not a right of way. That is a driveway contained within an access easement. From the, uh, face of the curb to that building is going to be about ten feet, eleven feet. So from the face of the curb here to the corner of that building is about eleven feet, it looks like. We have fifty, fifty-one point nine feet in total. From the property line to that building corner is fifty-one point nine feet. And the access easement is fifty feet wide. So the building would be, would be one point nine feet behind that uh, easement line. So that gives me eleven point nine feet from the face of curb to that building corner. I don't think there's any need to, I mean, eleven point nine feet, that's plenty of distance. And it's along a straight piece. There's no, there's no curve there. I don't. We could, um, we could certainly put a guide rail there around that corner. We can put a guy, we'll put a guide rail around that corner of the building.
Anybody else? Do you have any other witnesses?
No, not unless there's questions.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for traffic or? All right, at this point, I'd like to open it up to public comment. If anyone wishes to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone. All in favor? All right. Okay. So it looks like, um, pretty minor changes. You've addressed the, uh, right of way. Um, anybody have anything to add? No? Okay.
Is it going to be subject to your, uh, professionals' approval? So yes, yes, we have, we just have some tweaking that I just received comments today. So we have to work out a few issues. I haven't even read them yet, but yes, we'll send them through the board secretary to your professionals.
I would just respectfully remind the board, um, not to make the applicant's case necessarily, but this is a general, um, plan that had been approved. And the basis of this request for the amended approval is to incorporate this act, the issue of this access easement, which they've done. And I actually appreciate the applicant reaching out to the affected owner to work this out.
And I see Mr. Bavino has arrived. Nothing to add?
Yeah.
Okay.
How's that? You happy, Tom? Let the record reflect, there was his thumb up.
Well, I'm good with that. All right. Um, does anyone care to make a motion?
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman? Mr. Candorosi?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Marzo? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudek?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Thank you. All right. And, um, lastly, we have, um, block fifty-one oh one, fifty-two oh one, fifty-three oh one, lots fifty-two and fifty-three. Uh, Hampshire Hills.
Good afternoon, board.
Hi. Good evening. Um, Mr. Clea, if you could lead off, please bring us up to the floor.
Yep. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a pretty simple application. Um, they're looking to amend the prior approval associated with the Hampshire Hills development to eliminate, um, fencing around the drainage basins.
Mr. Peters, anything to add?
Um, other than the existing housing development, which has been there for close to twenty years, is a, still a permitted use in the zone, which is why they are here before the planning board.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, uh, as the, uh, as your experts testify that this is a rather simple, uh, routine, this is for removal of a fence that's surrounded some detention basins throughout the association. There are.
You are.
I'm the attorney for the association.
And what is your name?
Christopher Lugara, L U G A R A. And I have, uh, my witness here, I have Donna Prada. Um, swear her in now or later?
And to what capacity?
I'm just going to have her testify as to why the, uh, fence was removed and the necessity of why it was undertaken.
And?
Oh, all right. Whoa, 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 whoa. All right, let's do it. Why don't you, can you grab a, uh, mic, please, and raise your right hand? Is the mic on? You gotta just double check. I apologize. There you go. Ma'am, if you'd kindly stand and raise your right hand, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, please?
Sure. My name is Donna Prada, like the designer, P R A D A. And I am with Executive Property Management, who is the managing agent for Hampshire Hills.
Your witness?
Yes. Okay. Uh, Ms. Prada, um, can you testify to the board here? Please explain as to why the fences were removed.
Yes, the fences, um, we received numerous complaints from the residents of the community that the fences were continuously being broken. They felt that they served no purpose because they were not a deterrent. They were a split rail fence. Um, they were getting broken by either vandalism, even by deer jumping over the fence to go into the open parcel of land. Um, and it was costing the association quite a lot of money to continuously have to repair them. That's why the homeowners were in a bit of an uproar and did not want to continue to spend this money on the fencing.
So aside from the monetary concerns, you said there were safety concerns. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
With the fencing being continuously broken and slats laying there, um, the posts, they felt that children could, you know, be hurt if they were playing in that area.
So in your experience as property manager, um, would you say that removal of the fences actually increased safety, um, around the basins?
I would.
So you also feel that, and it's also your opinion that the, that the fencing didn't really prevent any, whether it be children or an automobile or other, you know, unwanted zibles from entering the basin?
No, I don't feel it was a deterrent at all.
Okay. And then just last, would you, would you give just a, an estimate of how deep would you say these basins were throughout the association roughly?
Not very deep.
Okay. Um, and does the association have any intentions to replace the fencing to the best of your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. I have no further questions.
All right. One question, Mr. Chairman, first. Does this, is the association, I guess they're now aware that it was a requirement of the approval to have the fence though?
Unfortunately, yes. And we apologize for that.
Okay. Um, Mr. Clea or, or Mr. Peters, um, do you have any, uh, provide any input as to why these fences were, um, put there to begin with and the type of fence that was used?
Yeah.
Watching it get built.
Yeah, exactly.
Which one of you were here twenty years?
Of us, actually, but.
We'll keep that to ourselves.
He was the board engineer. I was town engineer.
Um, typically, we see them all the time, drainage basins and drain, in the, in the development, there's a fence around it. Um, you know, typically it's a four foot, there's some wire put on it, but the reason I think is always typically safety. That's, that's the main, you know, you know, drive, driving force, uh, behind requiring a fence. Unless the base that your applicant can testify, the side slopes are so shallow that people can walk up easily, that the basin doesn't hold water. It's not designed as a wet. Um, but there's a variety of different reasons, um, that it wasn't included in the original approval. And I think probably safety was the biggest one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I was a town engineer when the project got built. Um, and I do recall that quite frankly, the owner of the property now, or the HLA, is developer. So they can't claim they didn't know about it. They got it approved. They built it. Um, there is a point in time when we start projects, we're always worried about safety. We're also worried about creating an attractive nuisance. Um, quite frankly, I drove the site a couple of times just to get an understanding of if, if one of you asked me, is this, is this any less safe? Well, anytime you put a properly maintained fence up, it's safer than not having a properly maintained fence up. When you go out there, a lot of the houses that surround these stormwater management basins have their own fences. And quite frankly, after twenty-odd years, um, I don't believe any of them hold water. Um, and they're also not just a, the steep hole in the ground bathtubs with near vertical side slopes. Um, they were designed so that as Mr. Clea indicated, you could walk out of them just as easily as you could walk in them. So it's not like you're, some, someone's going to climb a fence, roll down a hill and end up in the water. Which, when you get to my age, having to hop another fence and then trying to get down the hill and then trying to get back up out. So the testimony we heard is about someone who manages the property for a group of people who have lived there for the last two decades. And they've made a determination that having the fencing is not a deterrent anymore. And so that being said, I don't take any exception to the request for removing the fence. I just want to make sure that we're sort of clear. It was always required, it was always required to be maintained. Um, but at some point in time, the community as a whole has indicated through the testimony we've heard this evening, that it may not be what they want to have anymore. Thank you.
Now, you, um, you testified that, you stated that there was wire. I'm not, I don't think there was wire on those. I think it was just a.
That, that was me. I say typically when we do that, the, the applicant will offer like a wire bash a screen, you know, on the fence. I don't think that was the case in this particular application.
Yeah, or, or some low le, low level landscaping, often thorny type, so that if someone gets up close to it, it's another, it's a deterrent. If you make it more difficult to get to the fence, it provides more safety. But again, after twenty years, it's not an attractive nuisance. It's not something new to anybody. Everyone knows, it's just like driving in the development. Everyone knows the short way out. So everyone knows where these things are. And I quite frankly, don't believe that they're, um, the attractive nuisance that you might have thought about when you were first approving the plans.
Anybody? Oh, Ms. Campbell? Please.
Is there a liability issue here that we should be concerned about? I, I, if we had that hundred-year storm and that becomes a pond, uh, I always worry about children and then it really is an attractive nuisance.
Well, they didn't bring any witnesses to answer that question. In twenty years, we've probably seen a storm or two. And again, the homeowners association is petitioning this board to remove something that was required on the original plans. And they've set forth their reasons, whether or not the township of Jackson or the planning board retains any liability for granting a design waiver for something that was properly noticed and brought before the board. Quite frankly, I think the liability perhaps might lie with the HOA, not with the board, the board's acting on a correctly submitted application.
I, I would agree with that, the corollary question I have, and again, they didn't bring witnesses, but is there a concern that they no longer hold water? What does that mean? Do they function? Do they?
It, it's some designs have, it's a wet pond. There's a previous, or a previous layer put into the basin on purpose to make it hold water, I don't think that's the case there. But over time, if the basin is not maintained, it will, it'll silt up and tend to hold water, but I don't know if that's the case here.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Prada?
Yes.
Did you hear the, the statements?
If you could repeat it, sir, please.
Just the question, do these basins hold water?
I don't believe that there's ever been. I'm sorry, I don't believe that there's ever been any. The water flows out. Yes.
And there's grading on that outlet?
I believe there's screening, like a metal bar.
You're the property manager, correct?
No, I'm, I'm not the property manager, we've had several different property managers, I'm representing the company. I do have some knowledge of it.
So you're here, you're here representing the company. Tell us what maintenance plan and program you have in place to maintain the basin, such that during that seventy-two-hour period, there would be no concern for safety of folks running through it while it is holding water during that seventy-two-hour period?
Sir, they do have the landscaper go through and ensure that it's cleaned out, and also check for silt buildup as well.
Yes.
How oft, how often do they do that?
That I don't know. I know that they have had the landscaper go in, I believe it was in twenty twenty-one, towards the end of twenty twenty-one, to clear it out.
So it hasn't been cleared out in a year?
No, I don't believe so, I can't be one hundred percent sure.
And what did they do when they clear it out? Is there like, is there weeds in there, is there, they'll take out any weeds, any vegetation, any growth? Is it dramatically overgrown? No. Is that the only one? I thought there were three, three of them?
Yeah, there are three bases.
Do you have?
I provided, I think it was four or five separate pictures, I know that's one of them, I have physical copies as well, if that would be of any help. That's another one.
So I, I guess one question that I have is that it seems to me that the fence has fallen in disrepair, that it was not kept up, and you guys want to do away with it, and I'm concerned about the rest of that property and whether it's going to be let go as well, just like the fence was.
Well, sir, I wouldn't say that it was left in disrepair. As I previously mentioned, the fence would be vandalized. Actually, deer, we're seeing one homeowner reported that deer would jump over it, knock and break the slats. So it wasn't for a lack of maintenance, it was that the fencing was continuously getting broken. And they had to keep, you know, replacing the boards, repairing, and the homeowners got tired of spending that money to continuously have to do it, and they felt that aesthetically it was making their community look horrible.
Well, you know, listen, expecting a wooden split rail fence the last decades, I think is a unrealistic expectation that, you know, a wooden fence such as that, I would estimate has a lifespan of about a dozen years. And after a dozen years, it needs to be replaced. I don't know, anybody else shares my feeling on that? But I, I worry about the rest of the property there being left there, not being taken care of. So how do we present that?
We put a maintenance plan together to ensure that the basins are cleaned out and functioning properly.
That you have this maintenance plan now?
We have a landscaping company that if there is any vegetation or any growth, they come in and clean it out.
But you haven't done that since?
I, I, I can't be a hundred percent sure, to be honest with you, I'm not gonna tell you it was done two months ago when it wasn't, I'm, I'm not gonna.
You're under.
Correct, correct.
I have a concern that without the fencing, they're just gonna be used as play areas. You're gonna have kids riding bikes in there and damaging the basins. Bikes.
Good point.
Motorcycles, go-karts. So the fencing keeps all that out of there.
The walls would make nice jumps.
Hell, yeah, excuse me, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, is there a structure in each HOA residence represented HOA that made this determination? Or it's specific emails, you know, comments and questions from residents that led the management to that determination?
Correct, it was based on communications from the representatives of a group of homeowners that were very unhappy with the appearance.
These representatives of the groups of homeowners, there's a structure to it, there is a.
No, they, they do not have a board of trustees, no.
There's not, so do we, you know.
Well, so can I follow up on that? I appreciate, so the, the community's twenty years old? How is there not yet a board, a board sitting?
Because it's a trusteeship.
Oh, so what does that mean? I apologize.
Do you want to go to the legal?
I was gonna say, you're in management for it.
Okay, so the developer was still the person who basically would make the decisions on behalf of the community.
So developer's still there, making this decision?
Correct.
So actually, it's the developer who's looking to save this money and not the residents themselves?
No, because the residents' fees, they pay a annual fee to the association.
So I guess, and maybe this is a question for the lawyer, I should maybe know a little bit more about this than I do, than I, than I do off the top of my head. But at some point, I thought all communities get turned over to the homeowners. Why, after twenty years, has this taken so long?
I'm not sure if that's one hundred percent a requirement, I'm not aware of that, I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm just saying I'm not aware of that, but my understanding is, you know, the association has run under the trusteeship and has just been in the direction of management, but the guidance of the homeowners for.
The trustee on behalf of the homeowners association?
Correct, the developer is the trustee, the Kaplan organization.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir. Ms. Campbell?
Who took down the fences in all these ponds?
Ms. Prada, I think that question is for you.
The trusteeship. To me, I, I'm afraid we're gonna open Pandora's box here. Because if, if we allow you not to have secure areas that were required as part of the building, then anybody else in town who decides they don't want fencing around their ponds, which are ponds, I mean, that's what they become. Then it's, it's there is no, there is no ability for us to maintain this as a rule. For somebody to come after, and these, these things weren't taken down yesterday. I, you know, I see no evidence that there were split rail fences here, so everything's gone. Without any permissions from the township or consideration to safety as a general rule. So I'm not crazy about having these all taken down. I think if they, they should be replaced. If you're not happy with the type of fencing that you had there, the security of the fencing that you had there, then find a way to put up secure, longer-lasting fencing. Just my opinion.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Chairman.
I have two things, the first one, I agree with Dr. Campbell, you know, looking at these pictures, knowing that they're supposed to have a fence, somebody took the whole thing down. So they're actually, you know, against what they're supposed to be doing, you know, and if you never came in front of us, unless one of us knowingly went by there, we'd never know that there's supposed to be a fence there. So somebody took it down, decided to take it down, it probably, it could be the trustee that you spoke of, and left no protection. Now, the other one, how deep is that? You know how deep that is?
I do not.
Because as far as I'm concerned, there should be a fence there for safety against children and everything like that. Yeah, it could be a slightly, you know, but the safety takes precedence. You know, sometimes people just want to, you know, it's, it's this, like people saying they want a solar power or windmills and everything, but they don't want it where they can see it. You know, you have to put, it should be there, it's supposed to be there, they're required to have it there, in my opinion, it should be there. You know, maybe the wooden one didn't work well, it was probably cost involvement was put up, as far as the type. But we see mainly like metal-type fences, they last a long time, and it keeps the children out. You know, and anybody goes in there, you know, anybody that's aged too can go in there, get caught, so.
Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Campbell.
And agreeing with Mr. Fleming, this also then becomes an attractive nuisance. So, you know, there's a nuisance with safety in mind, and then there's a nuisance without safety in mind. So I, I think it's a dangerous precedent for us to agree to this type of situation.
I, I would just add that each, each application stands on its own, so the argument really that Dr. Campbell's making is that they haven't, that at least as of now, they've not presented sufficient evidence to support the design waiver that they seek.
Do you have any other witnesses?
No, this is the lone witness.
How's everybody feel? We have no. Yeah. I'm just starting, Mr. Peter, with the original resolution.
General resolution's not part of this application, so I couldn't tell you what it said. Decorative fencing was something that was and is still used in residential projects around stormwater management basins, it's an acceptable design.
Anyone else? Yes.
How long have the fences been taken down? How long ago?
Approximately a little over a year.
And, and how was it discovered? What, what brought us here? Was there a violation that was issued? What happened?
No, I think it was just a consensus after the fact that it was removed, saying, hey, shouldn't we, shouldn't this go before the planning board, and that's when my office was contacted, and that's when we submitted the application after the fact then. So there wasn't a violation that spurred us, kind of just, this is like brought to our attention.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything? No? All right, this time I'd like to open it up to public comment, if somebody cares to speak about this application, please step up to the microphone.
Thank you, sir, for raising your hand, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Ed Bannon, B A double N O N. I'm at twenty-two Abercrombie Court in Winding Ways in Jackson. We have these retention basins, one on the north side and one on the south side, they usually do fill as high as the bottom of the drain in a hundred-year flood, obviously, when the drain meets the bottom of that threshold of the drain, it won't go no higher, but it will drain overnight, like you never saw, water disappear. They do go almost down to nothing following within twenty-four-hour period, that's on the drainage portion. However, it does provide the security that people in the backyard are not gonna be using this as a playground. We have had our kids in the Flair neighborhood behind us come and use this, they use the hills for, in the winter, to sled down the hills, and they've used, they've come in and they've marred up all that concrete pit that was there for the drain. They spray painted that to nothing, I mean, there is, you know, some kind of vandalism that has taken place within the Winding Ways property on that. But yes, this will become a nuisance as far as kids using it. I, I, we have, we've had proof on Winding Ways. But as far as the drainage, there's, like I say, you've never seen water disappear fast in, in twenty-four hours in one of those pits, so it's not a drainage problem. But it is gonna be a nuisance problem with the kids.
Okay, thank you.
And as I may add, we have also had hunter. Because I back up to the power lines along Winding Ways, we've had hunters that actually cut a tree right on the opposite side of that fence to damage the fence, so the deer can get out and get over where they can then hunt the deer. So that, we've, we've had purpose, purpose damage on the, just on the residential side of the, the other neighborhood side of the fence, where they let, actually leveled a tree to cut the fence, and so the deer get out.
Thank you. Anyone else? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Where does that leave us? Guys, any closing? You wanna sum up?
Yeah, in summation, the association should have submitted the application before the work was done, but sadly, that is not the case. And that, that leaves us here today. It's an application for removal for a split rail fence. The managing director for the association or management for the association testified that her opinion that the split rail fences did not provide any safety concerns regarding entry into the basins and that instead, they actually posed a safety threat, namely to the dangers that it presents for children and deer that tried to access the fence. In addition to the safety concerns, there's also monetary costs as well. So in summation, the association respectfully requests that the planning board grant its application, thank you.
So I have a question, though, again, you talked about the associations making this request, but you truly represent the trustee on behalf of this association that has yet to be turned over to the homeowners, and I have to presume that after twenty years more than, there's usually a percentage number, I, I always thought it was forty percent, you started electing homeowners. So I'm at a loss as to why, without the governing documents, why this association has yet to be turned over.
That's really not under our jurisdiction, though, I mean, this application before us is for offense. I think.
It does go to the test. It does go to the testimony though, um, of the applicant, and I'm using the term credibility. As an attorney, not as you're telling the truth or not. The issue is. The, the credibility to witnesses set and respectfully to the attorneys articulating. As if there was a vote of the association at which representing its members. And there was testimony, as I heard it, that, uh, the representative of the property manager. Was represent, uh, was hired by the, ultimately the trustee and the applicant. He specifically indicated was the trustee. So there was no vote of the homeowners themselves. So there may well not be, this goes to credibility. And again, I'm not. I appreciate you nodding your head. Yes, it has nothing to do with truth or not true. Just the credibility of the testimony as to who's really making this, uh, application. And the board can take that into account, in my opinion, coupled with, um, the fact that. Uh, arguably, there hasn't been sufficient evidence presented by this, bless you, by this particular witness. Who doesn't have the expertise. She, she was a fact witness as to why they want this done. She doesn't necessarily have the expertise to develop, um, uh, sufficient testimony to support the waiver. Of the original site plan, a waiver of requirements in the ordinance itself, or the fact that quite frankly, if. If the issue is the split rail, rail fence, that doesn't, that wouldn't preclude. The homeowners association from seeking internal administrative relief for a different sort of fence that maybe eat more easily maintained. So that was my point for raising the question.
Got it. Uh, my own opinion is that twenty years ago, this board, um. Saw a need for this fence. And it was all agreed upon that fence would be put up. And somebody decided, well, we're not going to maintain it. It's fallen down. It's in disrepair. We're just going to remove it. And, and that's not okay. Um. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Um, I see heads nodding up and down and, um. Ms. Campbell?
If, if this, um, request for. Not having this fence is denied, then would that. Uh, necessitate the association as it stands now to replace all these fences?
That they took down? Yes, that's my understanding. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Hammer.
Yeah, just one, one last question here, um. Now you took the fence down, you know, it was taken down, told us like every picture you showed, there's no fence on there. Uh, my concern is, okay, that was a condition. For this stormwater management plan. I mean, is, is it possible it's going to lead to deterioration of the maintenance of the actual basin itself? But okay, we cut it down. We, we got rid of all the fences. Now, um, you know, the, the amount it's going to cost us to. Maintain the actual, uh, stem stormwater basin itself. Uh, maybe we, you know, we'll petition the trustee to cut back on that, maybe, you know, et cetera. Um. Uh, uh, to me, it's like a slippery slope. You know, uh, leads one to the next. If, if there's a requirement, my feeling it should have been met. You know, i- if it means changing the type of fence, you know. You always go back and say, hey, we don't want a wooden fence. We want a metal one. That's usually a very, a very easy thing to go through. But just to remove something, you know, um, out of it, which, you know, I consider the fence to be a part of a safety. In there, you know, no matter what the residents are, it's part of safety. People come in there, you know, and, um.
I think it's also access, uh, uh, delineation into air areas that. Maybe you should not venture into. Uh, someone's out walking your dog. They see a fence. They don't, um, you know, they stay on the right side of the fence. They don't. Go on the other side. So, I mean, that's the way I look at it. Um. Uh, certainly entertain a motion from someone if. They care to make one.
Make a motion to deny, yeah, that application based on the credibility of the witness, like Mr. Gerda stated, and the safety issues. Like Mr. Fleming stated.
And roll, yes, or a yes vote is to deny.
A yes vote is to deny, correct. Um, may I have a roll?
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Candor Rosie?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudek?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, before we adjourn this evening, um, something has been bothering me with, um. Applications that come before us and, um. Um, it seems that they're, they're not conforming. I hate to use, you know, li- like this one and, um, like. We had someone in here from Whitesville Road. They had all these. Uh, this equipment on the roof of, um, this building and made us all kinds of promises that they were going to remove these things. Can we create some type of, and, and it hasn't been done and it's been years? Um, can we create some type of mechanism for us as a board to, um. Bring these things to the attention of the code enforcement? Um. Some type of, um. Form we fill out, we give it to Ms. Morrison. She then. Gives it to code enforcement. And I'm just throwing this out there because it seems that. You know, we have some projects that we approved and, um. Nothing's being done and there were a lot of false promises and. I want to hold people's feet to the fire. Um.
Well, some of that, Mr. Chairman, is issues of resolution compliance as opposed to. Being forced to do something or not. It's contingent upon the development process. And one of the issues. With, with project completeness, if, if that's the right English. Is, you know, because of COVID and other things, and I hate to always use that as an excuse, but in this case. It's legitimate because what that did is extend some, some approval times and, and permitting. Apple time so that applicants have longer to perfect their projects. Um, so. There's a combination of something not being done as the applicant hasn't started yet. Potentially coupled with them not completing proper, uh, uh, compliance, but the gentleman to my left probably has more information.
I, I'm happy to sort of go through what I believe. The processes and the protections that the town has are. Um, Doug and I. Won't hide from this. Two of us have been here twenty-five years. Um. When someone gets an approval. There's, there's a resolution. We spend a bit of time on the resolutions. Um, and before the plans get signed for construction, they have to go through resolution compliance. The plans don't get signed until they're done with resolution compliance and they address all the items that the board placed in the resolution. Once Mr. Cle signs the plans and they go out to construction. You have the township engineer who has the signed plans and the signed resolution, and you also have code enforcement. So during construction. I would say that the code enforcement officer is the town engineer. He's watching the job get built. Once a job's finished and occupied, if something's supposed to happen, I would say that then falls to code enforcement. So. In the instance where we have an existing site plan where someone says, I want to build something. I have to clean up an existing site. Now it's expected. We don't often ask someone to take things down or remove things as a condition of the approval prior to them getting their plans approved. That just, I don't know that makes legal sense. Someone goes out in a field, starts construction. Generally speaking, the town has a, a meeting, a pre-construction meeting with the developer. Says, here are the things that are in your plans. Here are the things during your resolution. Let's go through them. So if a project's in resolution compliance, it's us. Simple as that. Once the plans get signed by this board, respectfully, I, I believe it's the township engineer. And once the project is finished and the town engineer recommends release of the performance bonds, it becomes respectfully code enforcement. Um. Certainly to the extent that the board wants to. Facilitate or organize a, a way of looking at sites during. Certain portions of the project, whether it's resolution compliance, construction or post-construction. We can do that. I, I, I've been on. Subcommittee of boards in other municipalities. Site comply, site, we're, site compliance review boards. The concern I have about that is there. I- is you start doing someone else's job. And you can't do it for just one job. For one application. I think someone, whether it's the guy sitting up here with the suit and the tie on. Or the guy at the governing body meetings, I think someone's going to say, then you have to do them all. So while I commend you for wanting to make sure that. The municipality and their professionals hold people's feet to the fire. Perhaps it's simply a process that's not being followed and that's something that perhaps through. You know, the board's professionals, the administrator, um, we can. You know, if someone says, let's look at these two or three jobs, maybe we can run those through town hall. See where they are, see how they shake out and see if there's. Something missing or, or a better way to do it. Um, but I, I don't think any of your professionals are going to run, run away from it. You've had the same. Planning board professionals and same township engineer for fifteen years. So i- if there's a problem, I think we need to look at it, reconcile it and address it.
Ms. Temple?
Let's take the example of this fence issue and, and I see right, Mr. Hudek, where you're going with this. How long are we going to give them to put up new fencing? About a year, five years, ten years, ever? Who's going to follow up on that? So if we don't let the township know that. They've not been in compliance already for, and I would bet money it was more than a year. Um. How long is it going to take to get these, the children who live in that neighborhood? A safe environment and, and to Mr. Fleming's point. I see lovely baseball fields there, soccer fields. I can see kids playing sports. And destroying those, uh, basins. For what they were meant to be. But whose job is that? And how do we make sure that, that it's being followed up on?
So, Mr. Chairman, that's a, that's a, that is totally a compliance issue. Um.
Yes.
And.
Exactly. And that's what I wanted to.
But the, I think to Mr. Peters' point, I'll take it a different way. Um, so something that I believe is important for the boards to maintain is their distinct. And separate authority. And the idea that in this, the way the system is set up. That, that the board creeps towards an enforcement mechanism. Has the potential to ru- remove its independence.
Uh, I'm not asking for enforcement. I'm asking for, um, some, um, tickler. File for, uh, that this board can create that then gets. Passed along to code enforcement. And, and, and the reason why I bring this up is, you know, if you go down Whitesville Road. We have, we approved a beautiful office building over there and, and right next to it. Is a, a, a piece of property that we had someone here that made all kinds of. Promises and, and that they were going to do this, that and the other thing. And it is in the same state of, of disrepair and, and eyesore. Uh, that it was before, you know, for the past ten years. And, and nothing's being done. So.
Well, except the day of the public hearing, he cleaned it up.
I'm sorry?
Except the day of the public hearing.
Yeah, there you go.
But it is paint.
So, so, you know, it gets a little frustrating. We have these gorgeous buildings that we've approved. And, and they're next to, you know, uh. A, a building that looks like it could be condemned.
But so, I'm, I'm doing this on purpose. I apologize. But, but. So it's, I have also have a concern about speaking about a particular, uh, former applicant. That hasn't been noticed.
Okay.
Uh, on note, but.
That's fair.
And because we don't know this, as we sit here today, we don't know the status of their resolution compliance. Now, if in fact, that, that, that owner of that property is not maintaining the property to current code. Certainly code enfor- that, that's why the planning board, for instance, has a council liaison, has an internal, uh, board secretary who can certainly. Report these concerns to, um, a- a- administration. Uh, the administrator happens to sit here sometimes too. That's right as well. Just the, the, none of them will be here today. I, I just.
But, but I think the administrative process is in place. I think that all the required. Departments or internal agencies get a copy of the resolution. And when it's their turn to. Process something for that landowner, they review the resolution as well as whatever application may come before. The zoning officer, the building department, the township engineer, all outside of the jurisdiction of the planning board. But quite frankly, yes, if someone's in between resolution compliance or hasn't started construction, it's code enforcement. Plain and simple. Go out there, you see. Block one, lot one, Mrs. Smith's landscaping business is not, and the code enforcement officer then picks up the. The plans, reaches out to the board secretary, the board professionals and says, where are we? We have a resolution. Here it is. We did or didn't do resolution compliance. We do or don't have performance bonds to act against. And. There is a process. It may not be linear. Because if they're in resolution compliance, it's your, your planning board's professionals. If they're in construction, it's township engineer who inspects the projects. If it's after the project is completed, it's just code enforcement. So there's a place, but I think any complaint about a project probably start with code enforcement. I, I wish.
And I agree. My point was simply to have some type of, um, communication between this. Board and code enforcement.
So I, I think that in terms of creating the mechanism to do that. That really should be part of your next master plan review because that's really where. The board could obtain the authority is recognize, as recommend an ordinance that spells out what your authority is or is not. At, until that happens, the best recommendation is, as everyone on the board, uh, is a citizen, is, um. Is either reported generally, the board secretary is here, take that down. You can either as a, as a board itself or. She certainly could, um. Can take that lot. I, I mean, as to that particular, as to the particular piece of property. All of us are aware, even though I don't know the lot and block off the top of my head. Uh, and we can certainly take the message from you chair and any other members of the board to find out its current status. Um, my concern is, uh, quite frankly, that I don't know if the imprimatur of the board, of the board as an entity. Should be delving into questions of enforcement as opposed to questions of status. I think that's a slippery slope that you want to stay away from. In my opinion.
I have no problem with requesting status. I, I simply envision, we have a, a line item on the agenda that, um. Uh, every meeting, does anybody have anything, any concerns? Yes, Marty is concerned about this one piece of property. A form gets filled out, um, it gets given to court, uh, code enforcement. Code enforcement can't be everywhere and w- we're part of this community. We're, we're the eyes and ears of this community. Well, exactly. They, they don't, um, so anyway, that's what I'm looking for. No more, no less. Just as a informative. Vehicle for code enforcement coming from this board. That's all. So with that, yes, Mr. Hammer?
Yeah, if, if we take this, um, application as an example, um. If they didn't come forward and ask for something after the fact. Who would know?
Nobody.
I mean, it could be years and years. Um, there could be other fences that are down, other things not done. But in plenty of, uh, these applications, we have stipulations. I mean, it could be years and years. Um, there could be other fences that are down, other things not done. There's been plenty of, uh, these applications. We have stipulations. And some of the stipulations are beyond what you would normally see. But they're required, what we felt were required for that particular property, to have to approve it. So if the code enforcement doesn't do the job, not saying we should be unfortunate, but if that, you know, they can afford it, and they could have just sat back and just like left it as it was. Nobody, nobody would know about it until somebody went by and say, there's supposed to be a fence there? Where'd that fence go? You know, but it was gone for a number of years. After a while, it's just the way it is. So I don't know exactly how it can be worked out, but the code enforcement, you know, has to do the job, but there's a lot of properties in this town. And there's a lot of stipulations with those properties and things you have to follow. So, you know, maybe there's not enough people in, in code enforcement.
So going to Cox again, speaks about everything. It's basically, it's saying, in all, basically what I've been talking about is that board members are citizens. Citizens have the right to report su- uh, suspicions of, uh, failure to comply to the code enforcement agency. Doesn't necessarily recommend that the board act as a, to, as an entity, as a body to, to be processing and reporting.
My intention this evening was simply to plant the seed. I don't expect anything to happen. I'd like you all to think about it, and, and maybe we can put our heads together and come up with the process. Um, I think it's important. I don't know about the rest of you, but I don't want to keep you here any later than what we are.
So what do we do about the application that came before us tonight that we know we have spent, like, as Campbell was saying?
So, um, we can, the board secretary is here. She certainly can take the information that the application was denied to code enforcement, who can take the appropriate steps.
And is that typically what happens?
Yeah. So it, and Mr. Chairman, to be fair, generally would, it would happen more in front of the zoning board than a planning board, just because of the nature of the types of things that occur that are not in compliance, if that makes any, if that makes any sense, to be fair to Ms. Morrison.
Okay. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah. Thank you all.